Hello, everyone. Welcome to the new city council chambers and the new city hall. We're obviously excited to have you all here, and I think I see more members of the public here than staff. So I hope that's important of things to come. We're very excited to be able to have this new facility and with all the high-tech capabilities we have, once we figure out how to make them work, I'm sure it'll be even more efficient. So, again, welcome. I hope you enjoy the meeting and, obviously, the new chambers itself. Hope you find the seating a little more comfortable than maybe our last city hall council chambers, and we'll be able to kind of reconfigure seating depending on the type of meeting we have. So we do have some more flexibility here, and I'm sure it'll be very much appreciated by the public at large. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
Excuse me. Councilmember Rusing. Councilman Shishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenny.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore is excused from the meeting.
Very well. So this is a city council study session. It is now 1:06 PM. City Clerk, do you want me to read that, or do you want to read?
I'm good. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor. Discussion regarding request for naming of No Name Creek. So Mayor and Council, as you are aware, last year, the city adopted a facility naming policy with regard to naming of city facilities and/or renaming of city facilities. In January of this year, the city clerk's office received two applications for the renaming of No Name Creek to Elizabeth Creek in honor of Elizabeth Ruffner. The applications were received from Becky Ruffner and Ruth Ann Norris. Ms. Norris did contact the city clerk's office following her application and advised that she would like for Becky's application to be the preferred application, but she does still stand in support of the renaming of the creek, and she is present to address council today as well. In accordance with the policy, the study session serves as the initial discussion for the request. Application has been placed, and then the application will be placed on the city website for a period of 30 days for public comment, and then will be returned to council for possible action at the April 25 voting meeting. That is all the information that staff has for today, and we will open up for council and public discussion at this time.
Well, I think I'd like to start by having either Becky Ruffner or Ruth Ann Morris address the council and make your case for renaming of No Name Creek.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Rebecca Ruffner.
Please proceed.
I thank you all for this opportunity. I know that it would mean a lot to my family to have something in the Prescott area that calls out the fact that my mother really devoted so much of her life from the 1940s clear through till her death at the age of 99 and 1/2, the day before she sent her last email asking someone to do something on behalf of the town. She was passionate about many things throughout her life, but especially towards the end of her life, she was really passionate about saving our beautiful geography and topology of our area, and that was right after historic structures, I think. So she was very, very much a mover for the Open Space Alliance to bring environmental groups together throughout the community so that we could work as one, and I think her -- one of her greatest contributions was she always said, "Bring more young people. Bring more young people. Get them involved." So that's why I approached you today for this naming opportunity.
Well, thank you, Becky, if I can call you that.
Yes, please.
I know when I first was elected to council about six years ago, and I walked up that center aisle, and Elizabeth said, "You better take care of my city." So I said, "Yes, ma'am."
I'm sure she did. I hope she wasn't shaking her finger.
Well, she's done such a notable historical efforts within the city. She was, I believe, the first person to create a historic preservation district in any city in the state, and we've benefited from that designation and the ability to protect our historic downtown and other structures. You know, her achievements are just a long list of very notable and important issues. So I think having an opportunity to name a significant location after Elizabeth Ruffner is certainly something that I think is well-deserved.
Mayor?
Yeah, where is that?
Where is the button?
It's down the right-hand corner.
I have it.
It's where?
You have to go back to details.
It's missing.
Oh, you do.
Becky, Ms. Ruffner, I just wanted to let you know that I -- we're getting used to all this stuff, too, but I renovated 14 projects down here, and two of those, your mother took the time to write me the nicest card. I first met her back in the early '80s with Alma Feldmeyer.
Yes.
And Bill. We used to stay at one of their apartment complexes when we were up here for the summers, and she was always so gracious. That was one thing we shared in common, was just love of the historic architecture. Anyway, this is a pleasure, and we were just saying before we started how stately the name Elizabeth is. So I think it's fitting. Thank you for coming in front of us.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Your mother's passing was a big loss to this community, and I think this would be a very appropriate way to honor her memory. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Rusing. It's in my mind every day that I see your mother and my mother going out on the Save the Dells path to the rally, and it was very near and dear to her, so.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Becky, your mom and my father-in-law had many adventures together.
Certainly did.
And No Name Creek sounds like it should be running through nowhere, Arizona. But I'm all for this. I think that it's something that the community will value for years to come.
Thank you.
And with No Name Creek waiting all this time to be named, it certainly is appropriate. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate your efforts and application here. So City Clerk, do you want to mention what the process is?
Well, we do have some public comment, Mayor.
All right, let's take public comment.
Ruth Ann Norris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here in this regard. I'm the current president of the Board of Directors of the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation. So we are a nonprofit organization, and our goal is to preserve as much of the iconic scenery and wildlife of the Dells as we can. Elizabeth had a wonderful, long resume. I think probably my application and Becky's application recounted for you the many, many activities she's been involved in, and at the very end, at the very last bit.
Barbara.
She was also a board member on Granite Dells Preservation Foundation. So the last year of her life, she was active in our group, and it was a pleasure and a privilege to know her in that way. So I just underscore everything that Becky said. We think that naming this creek after her would be an honor, something really appropriate to what she's done in her lifetime. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Thank you. I am also with the Preservation Foundation, the Granite Dells Preservation Foundation, and every place I look in this community, I see Elizabeth with an S, not a Z. I know that was a very sensitive thing with her, and I'd love to see that creek named after her. She is so deserving of that honor, whether it dealt with buildings, whether it dealt with government. She was a part of everything in this community. The Granite Dells Preservation Foundation is also working on an application with the state of Arizona. With your approval of this, we will continue to pursue that, to have the maps changed in the state maps and have that as well, so it is official in the state of Arizona that it would become Elizabeth Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dottie.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and I'm liking your new digs. I hope you get all the technical problems worked out. I know I've been involved in those many times. But it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm representing myself as a long-term resident of Prescott at 2194 Forest Mountain Road, by the way, and also as a member of Save the Dells. I think Elizabeth and I shared a long-term appreciation of Prescott's natural beauty and historic structures and the need to protect those, and so I really appreciated all the work that Elizabeth was involved in all her life, and she was a hero to me in that regard. And I want to just say that personally and as Save the Dells, we support the naming of No Name Creek, Elizabeth Creek, and we appreciate the council being willing to address the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Hello, council. Good to see you here. I am also a longtime resident of Prescott, and I had the honor of -- I'm going to tag on to something that Becky said, if I might, to really drive it home, I suppose. I had the honor to work with her for the last number of years of her life and actually touch and file away and archive her Open Space Alliance files. And she, along with Brenda Smith and I, worked on 14 press books about open space and her -- and the city of Prescott. They are all archived at Charlotte Hall for your information. A couple people were in there last week, blown away with the amount of information on different projects related to open space that she worked with. So Brenda Taylor at Charlotte Hall would be happy to get any of those out if you ever want to learn some about past history. That was very important to Elizabeth, and it was an honor to learn as much as I could from her and to be able to archive those for her. So I know she also would love to see -- I'm just going to put this bug in your ear -- another commission related to open space, some more of a formal entity that works on this, as many community have and as we once again need. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, any additional comments or concerns from the council?
That's it.
Councilman Tenny, are you trying to make that work?
I -- yes. I'm still trying to make it work.
Would you like to make a comment, or?
Well, there may be people who don't even know where this is. I've been out there lots of times. Maybe some of you have as well. It's a beautiful, beautiful area, named after -- soon to be named after a beautiful woman, so very excited for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, I think at this point, City Clerk, you can describe the remaining process.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I mentioned, in accordance with the city policy, the applications will now be added to the city of Prescott website and will be available for review for a period of 30 days, and the public may submit comments to our office at city.clerk@prescott-az.gov. All of those public comments will be compiled and presented to council at the April 25 voting meeting for them to review and take action on this matter.
Well, very good, then. I would expect that we'll probably see everyone who's concerned about this issue back here in about a month. All right, we'll move on to our next item on the council's study session, item B.
Discussion regarding proposed amendments to or the replacement of Prescott City Code 5-9-1 through 5-9-6.
I think this is kind of your area here, City Attorney.
It is. Thank you, Mayor. You have before you a draft for a new camping ordinance within the city. At this point, you will not be voting on this today, but we seek direction in how you want to go in terms of the camping policy. We have discussed previously some of the legal aspects of it, but at this point, we want direction on what council wants to see, including the draft as it is, or time and place restrictions, designated areas, or a permitting process, and to get your direction in that respect. And it should be noted that the PIT count that's included currently in the draft ordinance is a year old. There has been a new count, but we don't have those numbers yet. So those numbers may change, but as I mentioned, we want to hear from council direction on what you'd like to see in this ordinance or how you'd like it to be written.
So PIT, for those of you that aren't familiar with that acronym, that's a Point-in-Time Survey and Count. So I know I volunteered at the U.S. Vet Stand Down for quite a few years, and we sometimes, frequently and almost every year, would see veterans who really resided in the forest and would come in for maybe a new backpack, some socks, a new pair of boots, and get their hair cut and their teeth checked and things like that. So we know that there are significant homeless residents that do camp at various places, even though my conversations with a few of them kind of indicated that they -- that was their preference. They really didn't want a roof over their heads. They just wanted to be pretty much left alone. But it's pretty clear that camping within the city limits and on streets and other locations can be quite a challenge to the community at large. We've certainly seen what the expansion of those concerns can create in other cities like downtown Phoenix and all over the state of California, from my experience. So being able to have an enforceable and fair and constitutionally justified camping ordinance, I think is important to adopt. Otherwise, we know from several of the court cases that if a city doesn't have one that's legitimate and enforceable, the courts can impose one. And I don't know about you, but I'd rather craft it for the best interest of our city rather than having the courts tell us what we can or can't do. Any comments or questions from the council? I have a feeling it's Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have questions, Joe, a lot of them, which I think I've kind of already shared with you, but I guess one of the concerns I have with the way this ordinance is crafted right now is the legal exposure for liability to the city, and I guess I would like to hear you perhaps opine on that a little bit to say where the vulnerabilities are in this ordinance as it's crafted right now, because that's a big concern of mine. I do think that addressing this issue is a good idea, but I think we also have to be conscientious that there are activist legal groups out there waiting for municipalities to make mistakes when they craft things so that they can sue us. And so I would hate to step into a situation where we're borrowing trouble, for a lack of a better way to put it. And before you answer, the other question I have for you is the involvement of stakeholders. I think there are a lot of nonprofits in this community that do the hard work of sheltering homeless folks, and I sure as heck would like to get their input and their suggestions on how to craft this ordinance in a way that doesn't create unintended consequences for their organizations. And my guess is that they haven't been really involved at this point, and I would seek to give direction, as you asked for, direction, that they be more involved and at the table with this ordinance discussion, just because the city of Prescott doesn't shelter homeless people.
Right.
I don't shelter homeless people. Those organizations do that work, and so I would hate to create bigger problems for them in trying to solve a problem. And I think making sure that we're doing it in a way where, when we're having this enforcement of a policy like this, that we're looking at it as an opportunity to connect people to the services that are essential for their existence.
Yeah, thanks. I'll address the liability question first, and I don't want to get into details of Prescott, but I do want to recap the state of the law in regards to camping ordinances like this, which is to say enforcing or criminalizing homelessness when no other options are available has been found by the Ninth Circuit through extension of Supreme Court law to be unconstitutional. So that's where we get -- and the potential liability lies in the moving numbers, that we don't know necessarily at one point in time how many people are homeless and how many beds we have. And so that kind of getting on top of those numbers becomes important to the potential liability, and I think that's where I --
And to that point, I guess the question I have in that element of this, because I think this is directly related to this, is the veracity of the statistical data that we have and ensuring that we have good statistical data to support an enforcement of this -- of any ordinance, frankly.
Yeah.
You know, and I guess that's my -- you know, I know that this PIT count is one way to measure it, but I just -- I would hate for us to walk in, again, from a legal liability standpoint, as I sit up here and my job is to ensure that we don't create undue liability for the city, as it's currently drafted, I personally see some issues with that.
Yeah, and I think the answer is, as it's currently drafted, we probably have some information that we need to wait for, including the new PIT counts, but maybe to do some additional stat keeping to find out what those numbers are as it's drafted. Now, we could also change the current draft and bring it into compliance regardless of what those numbers are. For example, if there's a designated area that's always available for camping, but that presents problems as well, and you guys can understand that. It presents possibly the idea of an accommodate if you have a certain area always designated. So permitting perhaps could be a way to get around that. But I think I agree to the extent that the numbers are important. As it's currently drafted, the numbers of availability of beds and the numbers as to how many people are in need are very important, and we need to make sure we're on top of those numbers. And then to answer your question about the stakeholders, as to this point, there hasn't been stakeholder involvement, and that's what we want to get direction, if council would like us to meet with stakeholders or not.
For my input, the answer is overwhelmingly yes. I would hate to see this process move forward without involving the stakeholders.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I think it's important that we all remember that this is a study session. This is a very controversial topic, and we're reaching out to the public and the stakeholders, the nonprofits, for ideas, but if we proceed, we must do it with compassion and dignity for the homeless, because I think we can all agree that living on the streets is not safe and it's not healthy for the public or for the homeless person. So I think it's important that we offer that homeless population options, and one of the ways we can do it is at the library. We have a part-time community resource specialist, and we could make her position full-time. And what she does is not just work with the homeless, but with anybody who, say, needs help with social security or applying for Medicaid or Medicare benefits. One of the things that she did recently was a homeless young man needed a bicycle to get to his job, and she found a bicycle for him. So if we do tighten up our ordinance, we have to make sure that we do offer options to help that person. Another way, we have a homeless veteran population, and we've been partnering with the VA to build a new housing, over 100 units, to house our homeless veterans at the VA campus where they have easy access to social services, medical care, and also the support of the veteran community. We also have another idea of, you know, we have opioid settlements. As you know, a lot of homelessness can be caused by drug abuse, and we're going to be getting annual contributions from that settlement, which we can use to help the homeless. So I just want the public to realize that we're looking at all options. It's a multi-pronged approach, and that it's something we're just not being draconian about. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm supportive of the draft ordinance with a few tweaks, but I did want to kind of drive home what Brandon Montoya said, Mayor Pro Tem, about the data collection. Again, you know, we're having a situation in the city where I think we would find it very, very helpful to actually know how many homeless are in our city, and also the accounting of how many beds are available. The other very important part of this, I think, is that many of these potential homeless need to be given this information at point of contact. I would be in favor of having some kind of a pamphlet or a leaflet passed out, for example, when they're paroled out of the jail system, even in some of the drug rehabilitation centers, making sure that these potential homeless people, or maybe the ones that have even declared that they are homeless, give them the information that they need to make the right decisions as they go forward. Thank you.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that at the moment, we don't seem to have a particularly noticeable problem here, but as I mentioned before, that's no reason to ignore it. I think it's important that we address this issue because we've seen it occur across our state and even in neighboring states, and I think it's important that we establish a ordinance and a policy that's legally enforceable, legally fairly applied, and I think the first step is being able to find out what is the scope of the problem. And even though the county does a point-in-time count once a year, there were -- it's difficult to extrapolate their statistics into our city. I think if we could possibly piggyback on their process, we could apply it to city limits and be able to come up with some reasonable numbers of what the scope of the problem is, and then work with our other stakeholders that are providing some shelter services to understand what capacity we have relative to the homeless population that we've identified. Once we have that step completed, then we can probably debate about how exactly we would apply this no camping in areas that could be subject to some establishment of camping, whether it's an individual or a small group. I know sometimes when, you know, one tent pops up, and if it isn't immediately contacted, then before you know it, there's two, three, four, or five, and then you have a really large problem that's much more difficult to deal with. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Mayor Carol Benedict.
Excuse me. I think, Brandon, you had another question.
Yeah, sorry, Carol. I'll be real brief. I guess an additional question I have is, do these point-in-time -- the point-in-time process that the county's engaged in right now? now with this, I imagine there's a measure for identifying the number of children that are homeless as well. And I guess it's of particular interest to me because I spent eight of the 18 years as a child that I've been, that I was a child, being homeless. So it's a real problem. And I guess I wonder, do the school systems here have measures of those? And also, by the way, speaking of someone who was homeless in this school system at one point in my life, I'll tell you that even if you have those numbers or perceive that you have those numbers, in my experience, most children aren't going to volunteer the information that they're homeless. And, and I still remember vividly as a kid, waiting to get picked up from my parents, and teachers leaving the school because I was the last kid there, and very kindly saying, hey, we'll, we'll give you a ride. And I would have happily taken a ride from them, but I didn't know where to tell them to go. And so I guess, I think about, to Councilmember Rusin's point, we have to be really humane about how we do this. And we have to think about the individuals that are unhoused as people, first and foremost, and people who have had unfortunate events in their lives happened. And, and some of them, maybe they're happy living that lifestyle. I will tell you, my guess is that it's not an overwhelming majority of the people who are voluntarily homeless. The other question I have, and this might be more for the police department than for, for the legal department, but do, going back to the data piece, what numbers do we have in terms of the amount of man-hours that are being put into dealing with homeless populations in this community? And I don't, I'm guessing, maybe we don't even know. But maybe we have an idea. But, but I would like to quantify the problem generally, because I think we can't really address any problem in the community without knowing the hard numbers.
Yeah, and I think that, I guess to get to your, a few of the issues, we don't have numbers from the school. They may or may not, I don't know. And we can talk to them. But as, and then in terms of the voluntary homeless question, I think it's important to understand that the presumption will always be that it's involuntary, and that the burden of proof is rest with the city to prove that someone is voluntary homeless, if we were going to prosecute on that, on that framework. So, but that's one thing in terms of the school numbers, if council's direction is get some better numbers and to do some of the research, we can also look and talk to the schools as well.
Councilman Tenny.
Thanks, Mayor. Glad to get my system up and running here, be able to press the same buttons as everybody else. And I'll be brief as well. Just speaking on behalf of the school district, many of you know I work there as well. We do track that very carefully. We reach out to, to students who show signs of potential homelessness. And homelessness doesn't, as you probably know, necessarily mean they're slept on the sidewalk last night or slept in a motel. But if they're doubled up with, in Grandma's house, for instance, involuntarily, et cetera, that type of thing. But we do keep statistics on that and provide lots of support for students in that situation.
Very good.
We can certainly help with that data tracking, from the, you know, excuse me, from the pre-K to about age 17 demographics set.
I think you're right, Mayor Protem and Councilman Tenny, being able to really grasp the scope of this issue before we enact an ordinance to deal with it, is pretty important to know what, what we're dealing with and what the potential consequences are, cost-related. Of course, the police department is probably one of the first contacts with people that might be deciding to camp on city streets or vacant lots and things like that. So I think it's important that their policies be aligned with any ordinance that we adopt. Public comment?
Carol Benedict.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a prepared statement, so I don't go over my three minutes. I want to make sure I stay mindful of time. I am here to request that you not consider a stronger camping ban ordinance within the city at this time. It concerns me to see that our most vulnerable citizens are targeted and criminalized in this proposed ordinance. It's filled with negative bias. It's demeaning, the way it is written, to those who have the least resources amongst our community. Targeting mental illness, addiction, and even a worldwide pandemic as justification for this camping ban, in my opinion, is in very poor taste. We all know someone who has struggled with mental health or addiction. Those we have known most likely have all remained housed. Substance use and mental illness are not the cause of homelessness. It may compound it, but it's not the cause. And what is the cause is lack of connection, lack of support, and lack of affordable housing. With the Salvation Army Warm Shelter closing March 31st in just a couple of weeks, 30 beds will be, will be losing 30 beds. I have so much data. If you got, want it at a different time, I can send it all to you. But they will be closing. So the timing of this ordinance seems especially cruel. It targets those individuals who are losing the only place they've had to sleep for the last several months. We should be looking out for all citizens, not just those who are fortunate enough to have a roof over their heads. Councilwoman Rusin replied to my letter, thank you, Councilwoman, and stated that sleeping out was just a Band-Aid for those experiencing homelessness. I could not agree more. But it's better than not treating the wound at all. Trust me when I say I don't think anyone should be sleeping out. This is not a plea to allow folks to set up camps on our sidewalk or in our vacant city lots. I don't support that. I never have. And the city already has a ban in place to address that if it happens. We aren't Phoenix with city blocks of concrete. Due to our terrain, homelessness in Prescott, for the most part, goes unseen. I want to mention that there is a bill in the legislature right now, a very important bill. It's SB-1585. I have, it is to address and give significant resources to municipalities across the state to address homelessness in their cities. And it even will pay for cross-sector teams, like with law enforcement, mental health, and outreach workers and homeless service providers to go out and work together to do this work. It is currently written with a dollar-for-dollar city match for the money. I have, Senator Bennett is the sponsor on this bill. I have reached out to Senator Bennett. I've asked several of our people who support us to also reach out to him to ask that it be exempted for, that dollar-for-dollar match be exempted for cities with populations less than 100,000. Because what's going to happen is going to end up being essentially an urban bill, because smaller rural communities aren't going to be able to afford the match. So I would encourage you all to also reach out to Senator Bennett. It's SB-1585, to encourage him to add that amendment to this bill so that we could also benefit from that resource once it's passed through the state. We need to find real solutions, not just more laws that will further criminalize homelessness. Please do not act upon this proposed amendment and perhaps call a roundtable with, including all stakeholders, to include homeless school liaisons, service providers like US Vets and CCJ, folks with lived experience, to try to work together and collaborate on solutions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Barbara Jacobson.
Thank you, Brandon, for what you said also. And I completely support what was just stated. And I knew that that was going to be stated to you all. But when I first read this, and I had to search, the city website stopped letting me pick it up on there, but I found the letter that had been put out by this group. And I had to search. And I read the whole thing. And honestly, it's the most awful piece of stuff I've seen in a long time. If you're sensitive about the word homeless, and then the word homeless is mentioned like 20 times in the beginning regarding disease and degradation, and as was stated, I don't need to repeat it all. But it's really, you need to have, I'm an old social worker, nurse counselor, teacher, okay? You need to have somebody with more knowledge, not to just put a caveat down there that, oh, if we mention homelessness, we don't really need it, 5.2 or something. It's just, it's not good. So, yeah, start over. If you're going to talk about camping, talk about camping, you know? I camp a lot. If you go, if you don't want people camping in certain places, talk about camping in certain places. If you're going to talk about disease of homeless people, go somewhere else. This is not an appropriate legislation for that, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Deborah Alacides.
Let's see if this works for short people. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have to echo the last two speakers. I was, I was disturbed by this. And I'm trying not to take it as, as any ill intent by anyone up here. One of the things that concerns me is the ordinance cites that we have 12% to 15% of crimes committed by the homeless. Is it 12? Is it 15%? What about the other 85% to 87%? I'm actually pretty concerned about those crimes as well. I've watched the city make a lot of decisions. You need to make decisions based on data. I've watched Chief Holger pull a rabbit out of a hat with data. If you're going to do something like this, it needs to be data-driven. I support the stakeholders being involved. I support the schools being involved. One of the things in the ordinance that really struck me, and maybe I misread it, was that if you have camping in your private yard, a police officer can knock on your door and ask for written verification that you've given permission for someone to camp in your yard. Now, if somebody I don't know is camping in my yard, I'm going to call the police, probably. But if someone I know is camping in my yard, I don't want them calling me. So do you really intend to restrict people from allowing campers in their front yard when relatives come to visit and they set up a camper in the driveway? This needs a lot more work. It needs engagement from stakeholders. I know you're trying to get ahead of a problem and do the right thing, but please do it with data. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Allison Leniker.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk today. My name is Allison Leniker. I'm here representing the Coalition for Compassion and Justice. I echo absolutely everything that Carol Benedict just said in the last couple of speakers. I would really encourage council to engage with stakeholders. All of the data that you have mentioned in this is in our heads. We have that data. We are living it every day. We are boots on the ground. And so we would be happy to, to partner. I also encourage some of the language to change in this ordinance. It does lump together those experiencing homelessness with disease and crime, further marginalizing these folks who are community members just like us. I also would really like to just share that CCJ and the Prescott Police Department have been working very, very closely for years. And I do think that that is a partnership that has blossomed because of the community service, the guys on the bikes. I know for CCJ, we have seen a lot less folks camping in places that they shouldn't camp when those guys are on the bikes and they're in the creeks and they're in the parks. I work closely with them. They call us. They know exactly how many shelter beds we have. They know exactly where to go to get resources. And so I would really encourage, if there is a chance, that those community service officers come back. Thank you again.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you, Mayor. Carol, can I just ask you a quick question? Do you happen to have any numbers on what the percentage of homeless in, probably in our city are actual veterans, as opposed to potentially recovering addicts coming out of the facilities temporarily? You know, nobody, I don't think anybody is saying that homelessness is a crim, is a crime. It isn't. And of course, just as everything, there's always a few bad actors that ruin it for everybody else. And I think, as our attorney has said, sometimes in many, many ordinances, they have to be written a certain way to have all the tools you need in order to prosecute, prosecute the few bad actors that are there. Most people that are homeless, they just want to be on their own. They want to live out in the forest for whatever reasons. Mental, I'm sure mental health has a lot to do with it. But for a municipality to strive to cover all the bases, to have all the tools that they need in order to enforce a law on a few bad actors, as we've had, I would really like to be able to have that so that if we need to go that route on something, we've got the tools we need. But, but do you have the percentage of how many veterans are actually in the homeless population here in Prescott?
I do. So, just really quickly, it's funny, my, it's my little libertarian heart that everyone says more, more legislation. It just drives me nuts. But that's an argument that people who are trying to pass gun legislation, right? Like, it's like, well, there's, there's these bad people that are doing these bad things. And so make this, they're trying to make a sweeping ordinance on everyone because of those few bad actors. We, I don't want to do that. I don't want the, our city to do that either. But we unofficially, the pick count numbers have to be, go through the Arizona Department of Housing to make sure that there weren't duplicates counted, make sure the data collected was accurate. But unofficially, there was 113 individuals in the unsheltered count. I do not have a tentative number for the sheltered count. The unsheltered count in January was 113. 20% of those were veterans. 20.3%. So.
So 113 in the city or in the counties?
In the county.
Counties total.
In the county, yeah. This is a county count. So the entire of, yeah, Pike County, both sides of the mountain. So we have, in the entire county, again, both sides of the mountain, 184 shelter beds, shelter and slash transitional beds. Last year's pick count, 100% of those were filled. This year's count, again, I don't have the sheltered count yet. They just got those turned in last week. So.
Thank you.
Well, based upon those numbers, I think we're not too far off from being able to at least provide a shelter option for those who are identified at the time as not having a place to, to sleep. So it's just a matter of coordinating the available shelter units, and then being able to coordinate contact either through agencies or the police department. And 20% is not that far off from our calculated veteran population in this city as a total, which is nearly 18%. So that, that doesn't drive a particularly high number. But any number above zero probably is a bad number.
Yeah, it was 18% a couple of years ago. We've, we've gone up. But so has homelessness across the board gone up, and not just veteran homelessness. So as an example, we have 30 people who won't have a place to sleep when Salvation Army closes at the end of the month. I know, Allison, are you, are you full every night right now?
Yeah.
So there, we, in Prescott, in terms of transitional and emergency shelter beds, we have PAS, which is for women only. We have CCJ, and then we have US Vets. We have two beds right now. We're in 97% capacity. They're 100% capacity. CC, we're losing Salvation Army. And then I'm not sure if PAS's capacity currently, oh, PAS is completely false, too. So it's not as simple. We need more resources. We need more options to be able to. I have applied for CDBG money through the CARES Act, with little the city has left, to be able to offer hotel vouchers. And, and that would be for veterans and non-veterans, because it would be CARES Act money. And so I don't, you know, I won't know till May, probably, if we got awarded that money. But I'm constantly working on resources. Allison is constantly working on resources. And again, I encourage you all to reach out to Senator Bennett and bug him about making that amendment to that bill so that we will be able to access some of that funding, because there's a good chance that bill will get passed. So, thank you.
Well, I think with the number of stakeholders and our concerns, both from a perception within the community and the legal requirements, that we need to reach to a defensible manner, that I think we've got pretty much the groups that are necessary to work together and coordinate so that we can draft something that's fair and reasonable and defensible. And like I said before, rather than, than deal with a homeless ordinance that really is not enforced effectively, and it may not be legally defensible within the case law that we're aware of. And like I said before, I certainly wouldn't want the, the courts imposing conditions in the city that we, if we take this seriously, can craft something that would be much more effective and reasonable and fair and, and really appropriate for those people that are experiencing this challenge in their lives.
City Attorney? Thank you. And I just wanted to address a little bit about kind of the history and why we're here. And I just wanted to address a little bit about kind of the history and why we're here. There's kind of a understanding or a perception that this is a real broad and sweeping. It's actually a reduction from what we currently have in the books. We do have a camping warrant in the books, as Mayor has alluded to, and it's incredibly broad. It basically criminalizes any sleeping outside or any camping. And so it's-- case law and the reality of the situation has rendered that current version of the statute or the ordinance unenforceable. So that's where we're starting from, not from a place where we have nothing and we're putting something forward, but we have something that's way too restrictive right now, and we're stepping it back. And that's why, as we talk here, I think it's time we have this discussion and start talking about what we need to do. And part of what I need and looking for in direction is, what is the biggest issues we need to deal with, so we can tailor ordinance to the biggest problems or biggest issues, and then start from there.
Very good. Councilmember Rusin.
Oh, I just wanted to thank everybody that spoke, and I'm glad we're starting the conversation on this topic. I think it's something that we should have had a long time ago. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that said, I think, again, this is a study session, so we're just beginning to wrap our arms around the issue and be able to coordinate with providers within the community so that we can have a more fairly established and defensible ordinance that'll work for everyone. So with that said, I think that concludes this item.
And I was just going to say, my takeaway at this point from the direction of council is to work with stakeholders, work to get better information in terms of both the number of people that are homeless and the bed and the shelters we've got, and then perhaps look at broadening the scope of our options and resources beyond just camping restrictions, but possible alternative resources and help. That's my takeaway from here, the direction. Is there anything else?
No, I think that concludes our concerns. So with that said, this study session is adjourned, and you're certainly all welcome to come back at 3:00, if you haven't had enough of our new facility. So thanks for coming.